All right, we'll open the work session at 6:02. We have a guest scheduled to join us. It was, they did join, but then was gone. So I guess we'll be on the lookout for him to join again. In the meantime, we'll go ahead and get started. Before we do though, I would like to save a good chunk of time at the end for zoning. I don't want to push through that because they have several things to discuss, I believe.
POs, huh?
Mike?
Yes.
We're ready.
Start, okay. Alrighty, well. Is it all right if we send out the curbside leaf brush pickup collection out with an email blast?
For what?
We publish a schedule, we internally have a schedule for when the curbside leaf and brush and Christmas tree pickups are. I'd like to send that to the people who subscribe to our email blasts.
I, I agree, we should, maybe we should send that whole schedule of events, we've picked our dates, right?
Well, most of them.
So maybe we can clean that up tonight and then send it out in one blast, our schedule of events for the year?
Sure.
You all right with that?
Yeah.
Okay. Instead of hitting them with two, we'll do it all at once.
Who's gonna remember?
It's all right, but we'll put it out now, mark your calendar.
Some people will print it out or...
Edit their phone calendar, whatever.
Well, they subscribe to our emails, they should get some extra from us.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay. Discuss the similar use petition for 1650 Minute Avenue, or you want to say that for later?
Doesn't matter, I mean, do we have to take action on that tonight?
No. No, I just keep it on the calendar because we, at some point.
Yeah, we gotta...
I guess I'd be ready to discuss it at the next meeting.
Okay.
A little more research?
Yeah.
Before I ask if there's any meeting dates that need to be changed, there's another date that needs to be changed, the movie night. We'd scheduled for July 24th and the History Center is not available that day. So I want to know if you can do it the Saturday before or the Saturday before that.
Or would you want to do it Saturday after, is that too close to?
Well, that'd be closer to Family Fun Day. Doesn't matter, but...
It's still a month away.
So what date do you have, Mike, the 24th, July?
The 24th is not available, that's when we picked, and History Center's not available, so, when the Saturdays before or after.
I think isn't the 17th the fair?
So that'll be the 31st, and then Party in the Park will be the 15th. So maybe we can do it July 10th, I guess.
We can do that.
I won't be here the 31st, so it's, we moved there, I just won't be here, but we can do the 10th.
10th is fine.
Okay.
As good as any.
Sure.
Okay. What they schedule tomorrow, then we'll email everything out, okay? And does anybody need to check the meeting?
Looks like...
Robuck is also here. Never seen that before, it's...
Yes?
Sean, I, I don't think that's Brent. There's somebody with the last two digits of 1-1 on their phone number that was dialed in.
Ah, there we go.
He's there, he's there. Hello Brent? Can you hear us Brent? Can you hear us Brent? We muted.
Are we?
Jeremy, can you hear us?
Yeah, I can, I think his internet might be broken.
Okay, now it should work.
Looks like he disconnected. There he's back again.
Maybe just turn the video off.
Brent?
Surprisingly, I have nothing, that's everything.
I don't think he's hearing us.
He's trying to do something.
If you don't have a microphone too, I mean...
Yeah, I am.
Brent?
I am here. All right, so you...
You think I'm causing the problem here with this, I'll cut the video, or turn off the camera.
We can hear you, so...
Yeah, we can hear you now.
Okay, I have killed the camera, I have unmuted the mic, I have gotten rid of the phone call. If that helped.
Actually, it's Josh now, Sean.
That's okay. Brent, thanks for joining us. We understand you recently purchased some property off of Riverside Driver 84. And you're interested in trying to get access off of Vassar Drive, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct, the property is next to, it, it joins Riverside and Vassar.
Okay, and so we, we did talk about this at our last meeting, a little bit, kicked around different ideas, there's several options that I believe came from Lake County Planning Commission, is that correct? It's from Dave Redachi at the Planning Commission and, you know, we even threw around some other ideas of trying to get, trying to vacate the roadway and getting you a driveway there. So we thought it'd be, I guess, a good idea to have you part of the discussion to find out exactly what your ultimate goal is and what you're trying to do. And if there's anything we can do to help facilitate that.
Well, um, I, I, I'd like to thank everyone for, you know, taking the time to, to look at this. Yeah, the, the, the idea is that eventually this property, my wife and I have spoken about it, and the original goal was to put in a retirement home for us. Someplace that, a ranch style home that we could retire on. And, you know, our thought was that at some point, you know, after we're gone, we would, would see about possibly developing that property. However, uh, you know, we've, we've had a chat with our children. We've spoken to a couple of other people. And it looks like it's something that, you know, the, the concept of developing that property is something that we're going to look at a, a lot sooner. So we, we've actually taken and changed where we're going to position the house. And so I, I'm, I can't give you a definitive timeline of when that's going to happen. There's still some pieces to the puzzle that have to be put together. But it is something that we're thinking of developing in the future.
Okay, so, yeah, that, that is, I guess, good. Our biggest concern is we're getting away from placing driveways at the end of a, a dead end road. That has happened in the past, it creates an issue for snow plowing, no place to push the snow. And then there's no place for trucks to turn around, delivery vehicles, fire trucks, anything like that. It just, it creates a bad situation, so I think what Dave Redachi was trying to come up with was some various options that would do several things, right, it would, it'd give you access from Vassar, but it would also provide a turnaround area for emergency vehicles, service vehicles, a, a place to push the snow, et cetera. You know, I guess, from, from my standpoint, some of those options create, still create some difficulties, I think it was option nine, which I don't have in front of me right now. Option nine was a basically putting a smaller, a mini cul-de-sac at the end of the road. And, you know, from my, from what I was looking at, that seemed like the best option. Now, if you are actually thinking of developing this sooner, maybe just extending the existing road onto the property and, and creating, you know, your access that way would be a much better solution. That way, the improvements you put into extending the road would be permanent versus putting a, a small temporary cul-de-sac in now and then at a later date, if the road were to be extended, then that temporary cul-de-sac, that mini cul-de-sac would have been just for not, you would have, you spent, spent the money to put it in and then tear it out. If anybody else wants to, has any thoughts on the different options or?
See the plans.
Well, he said he doesn't have plans, he's looking at down the road, whatever that last, you know...
Well, I mean, do you have any time of, excuse me, do you have any type of timeline here on when you think you might have some more definitive plans? Um, we're, we're probably looking at, I would say years, not months. I mean, I, I have to assemble some additional property, I have to have this, you know, it has to go through land design for all of the sketches. You guys know all of the, the pieces of the puzzle, it takes a long time. If the wheels of government moved quicker, I would tell you it would be months, but I think we're looking at years. The other thing that I would ask is that with the, the gravel wings on the 60-foot turnaround, I mean, that's really not, uh, isn't that a reasonable way to make this thing work? I mean, if, if you're so resistant to the idea of plowing a dead end street, something that in the township you already do with streets like McKenzie, where there is a driveway off the end, wouldn't the gravel wings on a 60-foot turnaround do the trick? I mean, I know gravel isn't your preferred item for that, but Dave Redachi, when I spoke with him, said that gravel is completely acceptable to the county.
Yeah, so, we have several other roads that have, actually, they put in asphalt instead of gravel. In, going back towards the Sidley's Airport property, Foxfire...
Foxfire and...
By your house.
Dorthea.
Dorthea, where they, you know, 30 years ago...
50.
50 years ago, they put in asphalt on the outside for a temporary cul-de-sac and it's still there. And it creates in itself, plowing problems with having the curb still there and, and having those asphalt, the asphalt wings for the, the...
And the issue, the issue with having gravel wings is you, you can, you plow it one time and you're going to push the, push the gravel up into a pile, and then it becomes a maintenance issue. And if you push too much stone up and it starts to get soft in there, then you're rutting it up. The gravel is just a maintenance issue. If it wasn't a matter of plowing it, you're just turning around on gravel, that wouldn't be an issue, but as soon as you start plowing it, you're turning it into a, a maintenance issue.
And then, we've seen these temporary situations end up be, coming forever. So most recently, the street I live on, when it was built, the, the temporary cul-de-sac was built just like the rest of the road. We have two up in, the, up in Township Park area, beachfront?
Beachfront and Lake Terrace.
And Lake Terrace. And one of those, they were built as fully paved, without curb. They've since gone back, we've had them go, go back and put curb around one of them because it was no longer temporary, it was going to be a permanent condition. It's just one of those things, if it's put in as a temporary thing, it's going to become permanent and we're going to be left with it forever. And that, that's how I look at it, you know, while us as individuals won't be here forever. In theory, the township is, and whatever decisions we make now are forever for the township.
So let me, let me pipe in here. So I'm actually looking for property because I want to build again. And there is no property in the township, and it's frustrating, trying to find something. I bought my house 15 years ago and I love my house, but I've seen a lot of newer homes since then, and I like how they look, and I want, I want to, I want to invest some money. There is no place in the township right now, unless you want to build a Ryan home, and I don't want a Ryan home. I've got a builder in mind, and I want to build. I mean, I'm telling you what, if there was property available in Heatherstone Village, 84, off of Route 84 is ideal as a, as a property owner. And I would love to buy up off of Route 84, there's nothing up there. Now, Mr. Robuck here is talking about that, and the concerns about Vassar Lane and the end of it becoming like Firefox and the others, and I sure don't want that either, but man, I'm, I'm weighing this both ways, and it's like, it's, it's a gamble, so he says he wants to develop it and, and hopefully he's able to, and if he is, that opens up that whole area. And there's people like me who's going to spend upscale property. I'm willing, if they were to make that upscale, I'm willing to spend the money, and there's a lot of people who like the township. I saw the same thing when I lived in Eastlake, Eastlake got built out, and there was no place to build. And people were moving out because they didn't have property to put a nice house on. I don't want that to happen to the township, you know, there's, like Metro Parks bought that whole area up where you grew up, Mike, and your mom had, and that's beautiful up there, you know, God, I'd wish there was property up there to build. I, when I drove my wife around that area after the elections and walking it, and I said, God, this would be a beautiful place to live. But you can't get property, so now here's a, here's somebody who's talking about a piece of property, and so we're stuck between putting the wings at the end of it or something. I would like to see something done, whatever that something is, without putting an exorbitant cost on the homeowner. Put it in and rip it out, I'd like to find some compromise that we can make that'll help enable this happening, whatever that is. And I'm not saying just do something on the, on the half to help, to help them out, as much as I'd like to help them out, but at the same time, I really want to encourage this.
But if we, if he develops it, that'll be a straight road into a development, it won't be a dead end.
So at that point, then, the developer, because he's not going to do this himself, I would assume, he's probably going to sell it off to a developer and keep the property. He's saying he's going to build and put a house on, so he doesn't infringe on it, but I would assume, the developer then would be responsible for tying that in, and then they could undo what was done, and then fix it.
They could, or would have?
Well, how do you do that, I don't know, is there a way, is there a way to tie that in where you could, you could help this happen, to facilitate a short term, whatever the short term is, if it's one year or 10 years, could be 30 years, I hope that's not the case, but he's not talking, he's not talking now 30 years, it sounds like, Mr. Robuck, what are you looking at, you said years?
Chuck, I'm, I'm too old for it to be 30 years, okay? They'll be burying me next to this cul-de-sac if you're giving it 30 years. Like I said, I'm, I'm looking in the five-year range. I mean, I, I think that's a reasonable, not trying to, to, you know, to be, you know, you know, too, you know, I, I want to, I want to be fair and inaccurate on what I'm saying, and I think I'm looking at five years, I don't think I'm, I'm looking at five months, but that's, that's where we're looking at.
So Billy, some of those other drawings, so that's option nine was the, uh, the cul-de-sac with the wings, as he proposes it, and it sounds like from prior conversation, not what was wanted here. But what about the other ones, there's where he, or it's, you push the snow up onto his property, that becomes an issue, right, from a legal standpoint? There's option three, it shows a pushing on his.
Yeah, option three, I don't, I don't think's good, because then, then we're going on to private property. What, what are PCLs doing?
We had, we talked about that. We talked about that, and our legal counsel said that it's our responsibility to plow the public right away.
So what if, what have you got on the blade, there, you go down, you push one at the, to the left, you push one to the right, and then he's responsible, I mean, you don't block him off in the middle, but is that possible?
Well, I mean, that, that works good if you're only going to plow it once a month, but, you know, look at the, the last weekend, we, we plowed the roads eight, nine, 10 times over Christmas weekend, now you're going to have a pile so big at the end, there's no place else to put it. Or, for, for him or, or us. Brent, when you're talking about developing this, are you...
Can you push the mic, can you hear me? Pull your mic up.
Are you talking about building your house before you do any of the developing, or will that be all part of the same project?
We're going to build our house first. That, and that's primarily so that I can stay happily married. But yeah, the idea is that we're, we're going to position the house, we're going to work with the, the folks. At least, I, I've been speaking to land design about how the sketches go, so that our property will cover probably what would be a couple of lots. I'm going to spend probably 300, $350,000 over there. So if we do a development, it's, I need to make sure that I'm, I'm not overbuilt for the neighborhood. So the idea is the lots would be larger, which I'm also getting quite a bit of pushback on, because apparently you can make a lot more money if you can cram a lot of lots in. But that's not what we're looking to do. I'd ask a question, the concern seems to be if the road gets put in at, at some point, which it will, what happens to this cul-de-sac, if you will, the gravel wings or whatever we decide to do? You know, is that something that, that you can write in that, you know, the developer, me, the owner, whatever, is responsible for taking that out?
Mr. Herman?
Yes, Rich.
If I can offer maybe an idea or two, just for quick consideration, would there be a possibility, and legal counsel, you, you're on board with this, I hope, that we can lease some land temporarily on Mr. Robuck's property? And when it comes to any roadway that he puts in there, whether it's a hammerhead or gravel, we'll just lease property. And, and the agreement would be, we could push snow up on the property we leased, that's, that's part of his property. And there would be a performance bond on his part offered to follow through with the removal of that temporary arrangement upon cessation of the lease and the completion of a roadway going into a new development.
Well, could you lease that for a dollar? So you could push snow on that property and make it legal? So on the, on the one option that Bill bit like, and I understand completely, it's option number three on the drawings that we've got. There's a hammerhead that extends on to Mr. Robuck's property, and that's the end of Vassar. So it goes on to Vassar, actually, the end of Vassar doesn't go all the way, so it would go on through there, onto his property with a hammerhead. Could we lease that property for a dollar, allowing us to pull, push snow up there? And then with that, provide for assault trucks, Bill.
Is that question for me, Mr. Brent?
No, that's a question for Bill.
Yes, that, that would solve a problem for us plowing snow, but I don't know, we're looking at option three, I don't know where his driveway is going to be off of that.
Is... Mr. Robuck, looking at option number three, do you have that in front of you?
Uh, is that the 120-foot hammerhead turnaround that comes in 60 feet?
Yes.
Okay, uh, the intent was to extend Vassar Drive and my driveway straight, I mean, it would literally be straight off of Vassar, so it would really make this a T, if you will. The driveway would come off of the end.
So we'd, we'd be in the same position, then we'd be pushing, pushing snow up into the driveway.
I mean, if it came out of that, he can move his driveway anywhere off of that T, realistically. And then fix your driveway afterwards later, but if, if the only precaution is getting the snow off, off of Vassar... Without going on the property, if it's... Allowing them to do that, is that legal, can we do that?
I mean, I don't see why not.
How long is that road there?
Vassar?
The road, yeah, that kind of driveway. Can we, can we contract him to just plow it, so that would just be his one long driveway there? He just takes care of that.
No, because it's a township, bro, we have that conversation, we take liability, he doesn't do a good enough job.
Contractors.
Can we lease him that?
Somebody comes on, it's, it's still, it's still a township, we're liable for it.
Can we lease him that, since it's a dedicated road, can you lease it as a piece of property or no?
Lease him the road, you mean?
What if we decide we want to contract out, snow plowing for any...
And you're still on the, you're liable for...
So yeah, the big thing is we have the liability for that road.
So in a, in a short term, you know, condition, is there any possibility of using the existing driveway that runs out to 84? As a temporary?
The, uh, the reality is, I, I, and I'll explain why, and it's primarily for a safety reason. 84 has about a 20-foot drop down onto this property, if not more, if, if you look at the map. Uh, and I'm very concerned about rescue vehicles or fire trucks if I have a problem. I'm sure that they're not going to be too happy about coming down a private drive that drops that far. That was my whole reason for, you know, one of my reasons for wanting to do Vassar was from a safety standpoint. Eventually, I'd like to open that up and actually have that drive out Riverside at some point in time. Uh, but that was a down-the-road type of thing. Because there's no, there's no roadway there, it's all, it's, there, it all has to be built up and put in.
From, from my, my opinion on this is until we see what you have in mind, where you want your house to be and where you want your driveway to be, we don't really know what our options are.
I, I would tend to agree with that, it's hard to make a decision and say, well, we're going to do something without knowing what's going to happen in the future, or what the future plans are.
I guess I would ask the question of, I mean, my plan is for the, you know, the house is going to set, you know, off the side of that property facing Riverside Drive. I've already explained that the driveway is going to come, I'd like it to come straight in off of, of Vassar. There's already an old landscape drive, if you look at the aerial photo of that, that has been built up. I'd like to reuse that, so the driveway is going to come through about the middle of the property.
What, what, what type of driveway, is it going to be a concrete, asphalt, gravel?
Yeah, it's, it's going to be gravel temporarily. I mean, we're talking, we're talking about several hundred feet of driveway at this point in time.
Not without a variance.
What's that?
It will, it will not be gravel without a variance from the Board of Zoning Appeals.
Yeah, so... Yes, oh, and actually, yes, we just had a gravel...
And eventually, down the road, I'm, I'm getting the idea that a new minor subdivision is going to be created and is going to use an existing subdivision that wasn't necessarily counting on the extra traffic burden as its ingress and egress to Route 84 and to other parts of the township. Isn't that the way it looks?
Well, Rich, I would say that since Vassar is the first drive that you come in off of mountainside, this isn't going to impact the majority of Heatherstone Village. If we also include the, the Riverside Drive access whenever this...
One squeaky wheel.
Division goes in, then you'll have, you'll have two ways that that can feed out.
If a drive is also connected directly to Route 84, there will be two drives. But we're starting with one going off of Vassar, which currently, by the way, has not one house with frontage on Vassar Drive except for side lot. Vassar Drive went to a perimeter property boundary that belonged to Heatherstone Village and, and it stopped. So I, I don't see where the intention was of ever connecting to another subdivision from Vassar when property was never owned by the same property owner that developed Heatherstone Village.
Why, why does Vassar exist then, what's your opinion?
Eventually, in the, in the original plan, through the Heatherstone subdivision, 40-some years ago, it was going to extend, Heatherstone owned all of the property.
Well, he just said that wasn't in the plan.
Well, it, it was on the, the very first maps that I ever saw, and I think...
And they, they just never purchased the property?
Well, they own the property, it goes all the way over to, it comes out on Madison Avenue, right by the railroad tracks. And the HOA owns all of that property now. And I believe until they found out that there were wetlands in there, the plan was... And I believe until they found out that there were wetlands in there, the plan was to have, uh, an, an entrance to Heatherstone subdivision at Madison Avenue.
Yeah, so.
And, and there were wetlands in there?
Yes.
Brent, are you aware of that?
Uh, I, I was not, uh, I knew, I know that I don't have any on my property, but I know that there are two parcels that, uh, Heatherstone Village Homeowners Association own. Um, and quite honestly, the only reason that I can see that there's any wetlands to contend with is they've never properly maintained any of the drainage. I mean, part of the problem I have with my property as far as, as water goes is that, that the creek that runs through mine runs onto Heatherstone Village property where it's plugged up and stops. So I don't know if it's dedicated wetlands or not, but if you have a creek and it runs and then you stop it, uh, it overflows and you end up with wetlands, I guess.
You know, we have a, we have a development, um, that, that is being developed right now, it's called River, Riverwood. Um, it, it's over off of Richmond Road in Painesville Township. Originally, the zoning was designed and approved for like two commercial parcels to be, uh, straddling a road that went into this area and then a hundred and seven condominium units were supposed to be built in the back. Um, so the developer started by putting in a roadway with a cul-de-sac at the end of it. And in doing that, and, and he never was able to continue, never did any further development. The property sat for a number of years and because that roadway was in and it changed the flow of water on the property, the Army Corps of Engineers came in and made a new determination and found new wetlands. They were created, in fact, by the paving and the installation of a new roadway, but the Corps of Engineers didn't care. Now, maybe you have some persuasive ability with the Corps of Engineers, but they've already demonstrated, demonstrated in our township that man-made wetlands are still wetlands and you will not disrupt them.
So it sounds like it might be good to get more information if you, if you enter into agreement with land design to do some preliminary layout, um, and they can help walk you through the, if there's wetlands, not wetlands, uh, make sure there's sewer access. Uh, you know, I know that area drains to the Heatherstone Pump Station, I believe. And my understanding is that's at capacity and they're not taking any additional sewer flows. I don't know if you've had any conversation with.
Yeah, I'm, I'm familiar with the fact that Heatherstone wasn't sized for an additional phase. Um, I, I'm aware of that.
Okay, so are you looking at septic then or?
Uh, right at the moment, we were thinking septic, but like I said, we've just kind of got it, we've just started in this process.
Okay.
And now that I have a new wet, now you've added work for me because I have wetlands to deal with here. Apparently, uh, ignorance and laziness can create wetlands and it's perfectly acceptable, so we'll have, hope to see what happens with that.
So trying to, trying to focus this, what's in front of us is a request for him to put, to connect his driveway off of Vassar, and then the problem is the snow plowing. So all this other stuff that we're talking about, in my mind, is not even necessary, it's not even applicable at this point. He's sharing with you future plans and, and we're putting stuff onto his plate that he doesn't need to do at this point, so. With that being said, I think we need to look at is, do we want to help this, facilitate this or not? And if we do want to help facilitate it, what can we do to facilitate it?
I think we need to back up though, because based on, and you're right, but based on the discussion we've had with him, he envisioned multiple hundreds of feet of gravel driveway, which isn't going to hap, which is likely not going to happen. So where does that leave him, knowing that that's probably, you know, is he ready to pave two, three hundred feet of driveway, knowing that BZA already declined a gravel driveway and likely he could be in the same situation here?
I don't disagree, but that's a totally separate conversation to the thing. What, what we're addressing here is, he's going to have to connect the driveway to wherever he puts his house on that property, whether it's right in front of Vassar or at the back end of his property, wherever it goes, he's going to have to meet the requirements of the township zoning resolutions to, to match it, so. If, if it's stone, he needs a, Board of Zoning Appeal approval, and, and it looks like he may not get it. So then he's going to have to spend the money for, for, uh, drive hard surface. That's separate. What's in front of us is, are we willing to facilitate this? And if we are, how? And if we're not, then got to tell them you're not.
I, I'm looking at option nine, but, but with paved wings, not gravel wings.
Yeah, hey, yeah, and I mean.
I just wanted to add that the same provision that restricts driveways from being gravel will also affect his wings, he wouldn't need a variance.
Well, so, so those wings would be actually in the township right-of-way. But still, it, it would need to be a hard surface. Um, you know, and I think somewhere I have an email from the Lake County Planning Commission, because about a year ago I brought up several of these dead-end streets that we have and, um, Dave Redachi said, if your property, you, you're not considered to have frontage on, in this case, Vassar Drive, if your property butts a dead-end road. So technically, this property doesn't have frontage on Vassar. It only has frontage on eighty-four. Um, now, it sounds like this is a great plan and if there's something we can do to help facilitate it, I, I'm all for it. But I don't want to make a decision and be short-sighted on it and create a problem down the road. I mean, I look at, at the end of Foxfire, you know, those asphalt wings that are there in people's front yards. Now, this wouldn't be in a front yard, but I, I don't, I mean, they're in terrible shape, now we have to go in and fix them. It's not the greatest solution, so I mean, I like that mini round or cul-de-sac, that option nine, but actually done like a cul-de-sac, like it was put in as, yeah, the road, it has concrete and the drainage is addressed. Um, we had a, a project last year where similar thing, it was a round or a cul-de-sac at the end like this. They just pushed the drainage off the end of the cul-de-sac. That worked for a couple of years and then over time, stuff builds up, the water doesn't drain anymore, it blocks it, it creates drainage problems. So in our road reconstruction project, we ended up spending extra money to put in additional pipe and catch basins.
If, if this was put in, option nine was put in as a cul-de-sac, why would it have to be ta- taken out if you have extended the road?
I don't think it would have to be.
Would be kind of like these bubble cul-de-sacks that we see? Um. I, I don't, I don't see any reason why it would need to come out.
I guess it wouldn't have to come out right then, I guess the next time the road got rebuilt.
Then do.
In a township project and it would probably come out.
That would save Mr. Robuck the expense of putting it in and then eventually taking it out, just put it in, first time, put it in as a cul-de-sac and then leave it.
Well, and then, and then that way, if there isn't any, any development down the road, if it is just one driveway off of it, then it is kind of the permanent condition.
Which is what we want, because you have to snow plow.
Yeah.
But solves the, could be, and, uh, once, you know? I think that, I agree with that.
And maybe Mr. Robuck would want his road to be a private drive. And then Vassar would end at a cul-de-sac and then from then on, it's private ro, private development.
Yeah, if they were to develop that and wanted it as a private road or.
Right, HOA-owned road.
Hey, hey guys, let, let me remind you about something, and Josh, you may have said something about, uh, part of the road right-of-way being on Brent's property, but actually no part of Vassar Drive, including any part of the right-of-way, is on Brent's property. Vassar Drive terminates right at that property line. It is sixty feet wide up to that point and then it totally stops. So any extension of Vassar onto Brent's property is totally on his property.
Doesn't that look?
Yeah, I guess at this, this point, we're talking about option nine, which is the mini cul-de-sac that is within the, the township right-of-way.
Okay, then, then additional, okay. Okay. So the roadway is concrete and we're, we're talking about making bubbles out of asphalt?
No.
No.
We are talking not about doing that, making it a bubble cul-de-sac with the same surface as the road, so extending it out into a concrete bubble cul-de-sack.
Yeah, with curb to go around the outside like a typical roadway would have.
Okay, um.
With drainage.
So if, if, if that construction is going to happen on township property within the road right-of-way, how, how are we going to handle that? Are, are, are we going to contract for the construction and accept the donation from Brent? Who, who's going to pay for that?
In our road right-of-way, who's, how do we acquire the funds from him to do that?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'm sorry to interrupt, but we're going to run low on time here.
Okay, thank you.
Sounds like we need research, I think number nine is the option, but we need to do a little more research on it. I would say at this point, that's my.
I think research, I mean, I don't know, Rich and Harley, if, if you guys have additional input or this, you know, maybe additional discussions with Mr. Robuck? And then if he wants to involve land design at all or.
I think a important part is to find out, like Rich's question he raised, how is that going to be paid for by property owner? If he's going to cover the cost of that, our legal needs to.
Yeah, I think we need to research that.
Yeah, how that's possible.
Well, because I think the county engineer's office would have to sign on, sign off on the plans uh, for it and be, you know, give it the blessing of, yes, this is, you know, this meets design requirements and.
I was just going to say that, like you could petition, he signs a one-man petition and, uh, assess it to the property.
I think a lot of discussion, I don't know, with, with our zoning, with the county planning commission. Legal and property owner and, you know, any designer.
But I think as a takeaway, I think number nine is the option we're looking at, and it's just a real, uh, matter of how to make it work and how to get it paid for.
So I'm going to pipe it and say, if I'm the homeowner of that property, I don't like your option nine. Um, I mean, if that's the way you go, that's the way you go, but I, I got to think, I have to believe there's a more economical way to work this out. If the gentleman owns the property and you go to option three, instead of teeing that in, sixty feet into his property, you do it right on the property line and you come off, all you have to do is have the trucks come in and push to the left and push to the right.
That, that's option eight.
Oh, is that what that is? All right, well, whatever it is, you, so then you do a lease, I, I don't know. At this point here, I think that's a lot of extra unnecessary work, but that's a conver, that's another conversation to have. Um, and I'm not, I'm just, I'm just sharing, I'm thinking if I own that property, I wouldn't like your option, but.
I'm not too thrilled with it either, Chuck. You know, now, now it's, it's getting to the point where if I'm going to be, if I'm going to be paying for that much concrete, I spend the money and put it in off of eighty-four and, and do it that way, that way all of that money is spent on my property and my money is not spent on township property. I mean, I, I obviously would prefer the Vassar, but if, if you're, if you're talking about taking tens of thousands of dollars of my money for, for something to make it, uh, so that a truck can turn around a little easier, that doesn't make sense to me. I mean, obviously I enjoy having Vassar, I believe that it's a safety issue, but it, it's, it's got to be an economical issue as well.
Well, and ultimately, if, if you end up developing the property, Vassar seems like a good option to extend Vassar into, uh, your property and any other properties you, you acquire and, and make that the permanent road, but.
Yes.
And although if that's feasible to, you know, to build, I guess, I, I can't envision what sort of development you're thinking of back there, if you can put the road in now. You know, extend Vassar at this point to what you want for the, the full project and then as time goes on, the utilities can go in and, and the rest, but maybe making the investment in the roadway now um, would make the most sense.
I, I wish that we could do that, but that really for me is getting the cart before the horse. You still have to deal with gas, electric, all of the utilities, everything has to be set up and that's, that's a process that requires a, a lot of planning. And I, as I said, too old to be, uh, waiting for, you know, all of that stuff to happen.
Yeah, I guess, yeah, so I guess good discussion, I, I think we're, I don't know, I'm leaning towards option nine, I think it sounds like Gabe is, Chuck's looking for a different option, I mean, anything, we'd, we'd like to help you and, and make this happen. Um, we got to also protect the township and make sure that what's done there is, is done correctly. Um, we can table it for this, at this point, bring it up at our next meeting. Uh, we have a lot to.
I apologize to everyone for monopolizing so much of your time. I think this is part of the reason this property has sat for so long is that no one wanted to tackle this issue. So it's, I, I appreciate everyone's time on this and, uh, you know, I'm looking forward to further discussion. So thank you.
Absolutely, thank you for, for joining us this evening and, uh, yeah, we look forward to continuing the conversation.
Thank you. I'll sign out soon as I figure out how.
All right, thank you. All right, Mike.
Um. Next item was, uh, Josh wanted to talk about Carvo.
So yeah, so we sent the county engineer's office a letter saying we were not happy with Carvo and we wouldn't use them again next year. Partly under the impression that Concord Township was just as unhappy as we were and that they'd be sending a letter. And correct me if I'm wrong, Mike, but it turns out Concord is not sending a letter to the county.
Concord is not, they're not happy with Carvo, but they're afraid, they, they know that the engineer's office doesn't want us to object to Carvo, so they don't want to participate in it because they think it will affect their ability to, for future bidding with the engineer's office.
And I can tell you, the engineer's office wasn't happy when they got that letter. I said, well, hey, but look, be happy we sent it to you instead of the contractor. So the county did have a conversation.
The engineer's office wasn't happy.
Wasn't happy, no Ted.
Okay.
I'm not, not, maybe not happy, it was, uh, what are you guys trying to do here? They have had a conversation with Carvo and said, we're not happy, the townships aren't happy. If you don't perform, if you get a job next year and you don't perform for the, the county, don't come back.
We've already told them that once prior.
I feel like we've been through that whole same story.
We've already had that horse show and, and this is not our first rodeo with these guys and we're very displeased. Our letter is very appropriate and if anybody at the engineer's office has hard feelings with that, I, I'm sorry for that. Um, but the right thing to do is to say we don't want them, when we spend the money, we want somebody that we're, we're happy with.
Who is Heckathorn, was that Carvo?
But did we ever, do we ever really explicitly at the end say we've got a problem?
No, because with all due respect, we're so afraid for the same reason Concord doesn't want to, because we feel like we can't express our dis, uh, disapproval with what happened and.
Oh, I think we can.
No, I understand, what I'm saying is, the reason Concord isn't expressing it.
Hold back their performance time then. Get someone else out there to fix it and take another performance time, maybe with sixty, seventy thousand.
The, the problem with that though is, I mean, we almost, we almost got to that point this year. The problem is our residents then suffer. They live with a half-done project where the berm work isn't done right. And the issue isn't necessarily the paving work they do, it's the stuff they do at the end. It's the last ten percent of the project that everybody sees, that you look at.
It's like any project, finishing work is what's most important to everybody, you know?
Yeah. So I, you know, at least for me, I sent the letter assuming Concord was going to send a similar letter and they'd be on board. At, at this point, it's clear they're not going to.
They did tell us at one time they were going to.
Okay.
I'm sorry that Concord chose not to do it, but that's their, that's their choice. Um, we've been down this road, I fully support that letter and if there's any repercussions with the engineer's office, then I think we would be willing to stand up and have that discussion too and get that issue resolved, because that's what you have to do. Um, but that letter was very appropriate and very warranted and our, our residents deserve better than what we were given. We gave that company a chance, they. They still did it. Yeah, it's just in a one-time shot.
I'll also add that our paving, asphalt paving job next year is going to be a joint project with Concord. So it's is Perry Township with us as well? Okay, so. So if, so if bids come in next year and Carvo ends up being the low bidder, we might want to have that discussion with Concord Township now. I guess my only thought that.
All right.
I mean, that's my only thought, because if, if Carvo comes in twenty thousand dollars less than everybody else and we say, we're not going to award it to them, Concord could be looking at us saying, but you're costing, by not awarding it to them, you're going to cost us an extra.
So let me ask you this question. How does it go if there's three, three entities? And two of the three say, we want it. I mean, how does, does it vote that way with a vote of three? How does that go to award the bid? Do we all have to agree unanimously or do they say best out of three in this case?
It is.
It's normally lowest and best.
No, no, he's saying with three communities, Mike.
And they will do that. And then it's up to us what we do.
So if, 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 if this comes back and it's us, Concord and Perry and it's Carvo and Perry and Concord say it's Carvo, then I think we have to go with it. But going upfront, if it's a one-on-one project, we're not in with anybody else. I really don't want to see Carvo in, in our township in the near future.
I just don't want to cause any problems if Carvo is low and Concord wants to award it to them, that we're going to now be.
Well, I think what he's saying, there's three of us. If we get a two against one, we play ball with them to make the project happen, but when we're a standalone decision maker, I think that that we cut them out of our.
Is it all equal? Everyone's part of that equal or are there disproportionate parts?
The way, the reason we're doing the combined projects is we're combining the bids all into one contract with the airways. Getting the volume discount.
Sure.
The contractor.
The more work the contractor's doing, the, the better the price is going to be. If we wanted to avoid that situation, we'd say, okay, we're going to go to bid on our own. And, and then that would give us the choice, but we've already, we've, we're, we're going to pass a resolution tonight to advertise as a joint project.
Okay, as long as, I just wanted to bring it up. Concord's not doing a letter, so we could get into a discussion later that, hey, both community, the other communities want to use Carvo.
Is everybody's dollar amount the same?
No.
Approximately the same?
For the, the amount of the project?
Yes.
I, I don't know what.
Yeah, that, that's what I was asking you before.
Okay. I mean, if we're the majority, I'd rather, I'd rather go on our own and go without them, but if we're not, and, and then it's, it's equally one-third, one-third, one-third.
At this point in the ballgame, that might be too late for this year's project.
Well, then we just work it out. Everybody gets a vote and if we lose, we lose, but we're making the stand that we don't prefer that company at this point.
Or we could just pick up the difference. If you felt that strongly about it.
Well, we don't want to go that crazy. We're not going to pick up the difference for their project.
No way.
It's just, whatever. I just, if our project's most of it and theirs is just a little bit, I don't know what you're talking about.
Like I think, like we just said, I think it comes down to moving forward, this joint project, this is where it goes, this is how it goes, but for our township, we make, I think it's, you know, I, I stood on the last project, I think, because that was, wasn't Heckathorn really the second time they did?
The first one was by your house, Barrington.
Yeah, Carvo do Barrington. My, my driveway's torn up right now at the end of my drive.
Right. I thought, yeah, this, so Heckathorn was the second time that we had an issue with them.
Now it's on my property.
And now three ti, now this is the third, because I remember having an issue with Heckathorn because it was the second, I'm like, but I feel like I specifically remember saying like, again, we have an issue with these guys.
But I think in the engineer's office, eyes, they fixed it. They fixed the problem on Heckathorn.
I get it, but I'm just saying, I remember that not, I feel like that wasn't the first straw with them on Heckathorn.
Yeah, Barrington was never fixed properly, in my opinion. My driveway, like I said, my driveway's got a huge hole in it now because of that. And I'm, I'm dead serious, I'm not, not being a smartass.
So that's what I'm saying. This isn't, I don't believe this is the second strike with them. I believe this is the third strike. I may be wrong, but.
I think you're correct.
My memory serves, I was fired up with Heckathorn because it was again them after Barrington and then.
Like these guys came over, right? They had to build it up with like, like, uh, I mean, brand new stuff instead of it just lining up. These guys are putting the, uh, whatever the crack sealer stuff on there to make up a two, uh, uh, half or three-quarter inch difference in the road grade.
Okay, so.
It's like, what the hell?
We have a file in our records for the performance this past year. We'll see what happens going forward. I think you have to have it documented. So what, what happened two, three, four years ago that wasn't documented?
There you go.
We don't hold.
Well, you got it documented right now. You sent the letter. There you go.
Yes, so we are documented for last year. So, all right, so moving forward, right?
Well, I mean.
Going into this, we could talk to the other two communities again and, and now petition them with our concerns and explain. We have one documented case, but that's actually the third case and there's two others and we know that you have the same. If Carvo comes back, we don't have to pick the lowest bidder. It's lowest than best bidder, therefore we can, I hope we can work together to pick somebody else because the work is substandard.
Well, I think at least we sent an official letter to the county, but I think it's pretty, was well discussed with them, our displeasure with them again at Heckathorn, because we caught a lot of flack for that, if I remember correctly, from the county, because we expressed with, with their inspections and all this kind of stuff. We got, got a lot of flack for that. So I, it may not have been a letter, but I think it was pretty well expressed back then that, that was, that was really the first time and this really is the second time.
So it is technically lowest and best. In my 20 years as an engineer, it's always been the lowest. There has never been a case that I've been involved in where it's been awarded to somebody other than the lowest bidder.
And that's why it's a problem of government. So we're, we're doing our best to correct that, right?
All right.
All right.
All right, moving on. Mike, did you have anything else?
We were asking if there's any trustees that need to change any meeting dates next year.
I'm good. I checked. I went through everything at this point.
Yeah, I think we're good at this point.
Good on what? I missed that. I'm sorry.
Calendar. Oh, so November, so yeah, what do we want to set the November meetings as? I'd prefer not November 2nd. Want to do the 9th and 23rd?
I won't be here the 23rd. That's Thanksgiving week. I'll be out town.
9th and the 30th? 9th and the 16th?
30th.
We can, we can do, or we can do the 3rd and 16th.
3rd and 16th. I don't care. Go the 3rd and 16th. Just move it one day.
3rd is a night meeting, right?
Uh, 3rd is a night meeting, correct.
But it could be, well, yeah.
Or maybe even go to the 4th. I mean, I'm assuming you're not going to 2nd because that's election day, right?
Oh, is it? Oh, I didn't think of that.
I'm just saying.
Yes.
The next day, if you're running an election, whatever, that next day's not all that great either.
That's true. The next day is an election.
You know.
Just saying.
Third time around, so it's a little less, you know?
If you're going to go 3rd, why not go 4th?
Okay, so November 4th.
Very.
Thursday.
You're always thinking there.
The evening meeting.
Patriarcha, thank you.
And then November 16th stays the AM meeting. That is not penciled in on your calendars in front of you, so in case you want to pencil that in there.
So November 4th and November 16th, correct? Roger.
Oh wait, I can't be to the 4th.
All right, so you'll get an email blast out this week at some point with special event dates. Movie night parade.
Well, I don't get the meeting. I wouldn't, wasn't planning on putting the meeting dates in there.
No, but you're going to do the special events, right?
Yeah.
Okay. And then I guess lead off with Christmas tree collection through the 22nd of this month, right?
Announcement that we're going to be putting in the email blast will be Christmas tree collection for 22. It will be on there.
Okay. All right.
The last item, Mr. Chairman, is I have is newsletter articles. It's time to push out a newsletter.
First you, right?
So when do they come out, Mike? So you said in your email that one is due, the write-up is due in like a week, so you want it to go out in February, I assume?
No, they, I made it, uh, week, Friday would be the deadline and then it's about one, two weeks after. You know, it's probably two weeks after that because I have some editing to do once I get.
So beginning of February.
We're talking like the very first, call it the first week of February, it sounds like to me.
In the five, probably.
I mean, is that fair? Give it with everything? Okay, so that's the first. So who's that? Is that, uh? Lawrence wrote one.
Or does Mike do one?
What's that? I could if you want. I don't, I don't really want to, but if you want me to, I will, because you don't want to. Doesn't matter to me. I could write something up.
Who wrote the last one?
Me.
He did. It was first you.
I was first.
I'll go first again.
Go ahead.
He's a lucky official too.
I don't care. I, I don't really want to.
Okay.
So then Josh go.
If I do February. Or do you want to do one now?
Why don't you do one up front and then push me back three months? And then push me back three months.
I hide under the radar.
You do January, February.
Okay, I'll do.
Okay, that's Gabe. Then March and then May.
Mike, give me a two-day reminder.
Reminder.
A two-day, one-week reminder.
I need a two-day reminder.
You could have Mike Patriarcha do November.
Me first.
Yeah, Gabe. Me.
And this November here.
This, this coming November, Mike P.
In a year.
Nine months from now, 12 months from now.
Basically 11 months from now.
Yeah, sure. Put me down for that.
Mike P.
I may not be alive by then, who knows?
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
I've got so many comments I can't say in a public media.
I know.
All right, Bill.
Got to behave.
Okay.
Or you can present at the meeting.
Oh, I'm sorry. I skipped over you, Chief.
You didn't, you intentionally postponed him.
Make a gun and go take that into the restroom.
Just a couple of things that I wanted to go over. Main thing is I have 10,000 masks to get rid of.
What kind of masks? Like the?
I didn't bring the 10,000. I brought a couple.
Oh, the disposable ones?
Yeah. So I have 10,000 of those. They were from the EMA, from state EMA. They distributed them to the local EMA and they went by communities. Figured, they figured we need 10,000 of them in Painesville Township. So they dropped them off at the fire station. Um, I was just given a couple thousand, like a couple of weeks before that, uh, for, for use on calls that our guys are using, so you know, these are, these are really for the community. So whatever you guys think that we should do with them.
I can get rid of a box of them, I'm sure.
Yeah, I mean, they're 500 in a box. I can distribute, we can distribute them that way for sure.
If I can get, since I'm meeting you tomorrow, if I can get several boxes, I can take them over to the high school.
Right. I, yeah, I don't know if the high school got, if they didn't, that'd be a great place to put them.
Sure, because I know as kids come in without them, they're passing them out.
Yeah, they could use like, from like when they're going to like, uh.
Oh, yeah, they could use more than a couple of boxes.
You know what, I'll just, yeah, there's, uh. Okay, yeah, so I'll bring some here and I'll bring some tomorrow.
Okay.
I'll probably bring a couple thousand.
Yeah, a couple thousand.
Couple thousand with me tomorrow.
Yeah.
Couple thousand.
Okay, I've got an organization that I volunteer with, Pizza Homeless, that could use some.
Okay, so I'll bring a couple, I'll bring probably six or eight thousand of them here and you guys.
Stack them up over there.
And I'll bring a couple thousand tomorrow.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're just, yeah, that'd be fine. All right. COVID transports, I know I put in my report that, uh, it, that we were tapering down, but I didn't get the final figures still. Till the, the second, well, till we came back on Monday. Um, but, uh, December was almost identical to, for us, identical to November as far as transports. We had 110 possible, 28 confirmed and in November we were 107 and 20, 24 confirmed. So we really had no difference between November and December. We're exactly the same as far as the number of transports. Um, vaccinations going well, I think, uh, they did. Uh, last Tuesday, our guys, uh, all of the EMS went down for what they called tier one. Um, and they went tier one by ages. So everybody over 50 basically went last week. Um, and then this week was the rest of that balance. So for, what's that?
Is that you? What? Is he tier one?
Uh, who?
Josh.
No, Josh.
I'm barely over 40.
I was definitely tier one, okay?
Over 40, geez.
Yes. Um, we, we, we did have several, we had, well, we had 14 people go last week. Uh, but were either tier one because of, uh, underlying conditions or, um, their age. So they had everybody over 50 was tier one, or if they had basically any number of conditions. Um, so we had 14 people last week. We had, uh, what did we get today? We did 30 more today. So we're, you know, we're over 40 people, over 40 of our guys have been vaccinated for the first round.
What's our total complement of personnel?
Right now, we're at like 54.
So 40 out of 54?
Yeah.
Wow.
Yeah, we're, we're running about 80% of our guys right now and I, I still have to figure out, there's a lot of, quite a few of our part-time guys that didn't submit anything to me that I got to chase down and figure out, but they may have got them from either their full-time job or from somewhere else. So I would say, I mean, we're in good shape. I know at least 80% of our guys.
Just out of curiosity, Chief, because they're going by, as you said, the tiers. Um, the 14 that didn't, is it, is it choice or is it because it hasn't hit them yet by age?
Well, it was choice.
Okay.
I mean, the, we, you know, uh, they, they suggested because of the first round of vaccines last week, I think for EMS, they had 150 vaccines to go for the whole county for EMS. So they said, well, let's make it everybody over 50. This week they must have gotten any more. They said, okay, send everybody.
That's cool.
So we ended up.
Which one out of curiosity are they getting? The Pfizer or the?
Moderna.
Moderna?
Yes. Um, yeah, still, they don't have to keep it as cold. I think, uh, the hospitals are getting mostly Pfizer because they can keep things under colder conditions. Moderna is, they're using in the field, but where we had this done and it's going to be happening every Tuesday, um, is at the, uh, engineer's office, uh, on Blackbrook, uh, Blackbrook Road. That which for the last two weeks, we've had to supply a squad for them on Tuesday, just in case, you know, they had people there, but they don't have, um, transport or medication, like, you know, someone goes into anaphylaxis, they don't have the Epi and things like that. So, you know, they had our paramedics standing by. And they, they went through a lot of people for the last, you know, for the last two weeks and no one's had any issues, so. So that's a good thing, but, uh, so, and I think from here on out, I think, um, they're going to have other fire departments have their personnel come. They're going to reimburse us for costs. They always have, so. Um, but, uh, you know, we did the first couple of weeks and I think they're going to look at other departments from here on in, so.
So since it's a two, two-step system, will they stop getting people their first dose if, to make sure that they have enough to do the second necessary dose?
Right. Yeah, we've already been scheduled, you know, like we, I got mine last week and I'm already scheduled for, for, yeah, for two weeks from now.
Okay.
Yeah. So, um.
So that one's also a double shot, huh? Each one of them is a double shot?
Yeah, it's two shots, yeah.
Okay.
So right now, like I said, we've got, most of our guys are done. Um, and I, I'm sure we'll have a couple of stragglers that want to come in, but yeah, that, even at that, I feel pretty good that we have 80% of our guys done because I mean, once we get the second shot, and not that we're going to be total immune, but you know, with 95% immunity, I think we can probably come off of our, um, COVID status staffing and stuff like that, which will loosen us up a lot for, for moving people around, so.
What's next with that? Just, I know it's, it's related, but not part of your area. What's, where are they moving to next with, uh, vaccinations? Do you know countywide?
Well, yeah.
I know they're doing nursing homes. I know they're doing those.
Well, they're doing those simultaneously. Like, I think the National Guard's involved with nursing homes, so they're doing a lot of that right now. The health departments are doing, um, it's a lot of the field people, first responders, and then the hospitals are doing all the, uh, medical people, you know, nurses and doctors. So everyone's kind of, there's a lot going on, but I know also, um, the, uh, drugstores are getting shipments of it too. And they're going to be setting up clinics at the drugstores also. So there, there's a lot of vaccine being pumped out really quickly.
Good, good to hear.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Um, yeah, the last thing, just one other thing is we, we talked about, I talked to you about this, Chuck, but Chuck asked me a couple of weeks ago about outages of 911 and I said, well, it can't happen here because we have a redundant system and this and that. Apparently it can. Um, it did go out. Uh, there was an outage in Manor which caused a, a power outage and when their backup generator kicked on at the dispatch center, it managed to knock out, um, some piece of equipment that caused everything to go down. Um, that thing that went down and it's part of a statewide mark system, so it, it actually was a domino effect around the state that happened right here. But, uh, locally, we have the redundant system that 911 calls were automatically transferred to Manor. So like when you called, we're normally it'd be answered in Kirtland at that center, was answered in Manor by their dispatchers. It, it did it automatically. It, it did it automatically, um, through AT&T or whoever does that. And then, um, as far as our, our guys, the dispatch center wasn't even aware, except everything was quiet, and they said, well, what, it sounds pretty quiet, you know? So they weren't really aware that everything was down. Um, our guys are pretty sharp, and I know I got a call right away from our guys saying, hey, there's an issue because, you know, our guys are on a call, Central's not answering us. And we can see on our radios just don't look right, they've had a little word on it, it said trunking, which means they're going radio to radio rather than going to dispatch. So our guys picked up on it quick and were managed, all they did was dispatch each other, say, okay, call the other stations, say, keep these times. And it, the whole thing lasted, it was less than a half hour, but, uh, everything worked like it was supposed to as far as having a good backup system. All right, that's it.
Thank you.
Zoning. No, seven-thirty. Harley.
Um, all I have for you guys is the new business welcome packet. Um, there was the electronic copies of this document in, is it? Sorry, sorry. Um, so the electronic documents were in my file folder, um, and basically, if you guys have reviewed it, if you wanna add anything, take anything out. Um, this is essentially what it's gonna look like. We see, so zoning sees businesses first that, that are new to the township, and they have to apply for, uh, zoning use compliance permit. That's basically their permission to operate. Um, and so when we issue the permits, we can hand out new business packets with this information in it.
My only question is, I saw you listed three waste haulers.
Yes.
Does Esquire do commercial trash removal?
I honestly don't.
I guess my only thought is, if, if we're listing, we have to be careful, we're not listing, if we're listing some, we have to list them all, I think.
Yeah, yeah.
So if you could look into that and see if.
Yeah, I'll fix it.
That, that was, I like all the information in there and, um, looks very nice, that was my only.
No, it's a good point, I didn't even consider it.
And then, review of zoning cases, is that gonna be you or Rich?
That's Rich.
Rich, you're up, review of zoning cases.
Unless you want me to speak on the defenses, the line of sight safety triangle. Rich.
Um, well, I, I don't, let's leave that up to the trustees when we get to that one, Harley.
Okay.
Okay? Uh, did everybody hear me?
Yes.
Okay, okay, so the case that we've been continuing for a, uh, a few meetings. Twenty Z C zero five, just to refresh a memory. The, uh, basic reason for this amendment was to add the indoor climate controlled self-storage facility to the B one zoning district. Since sections twelve and twenty-two were involved in this text amendment. Um, we recommended holding this because there are three more cases in sections twelve and twenty-two appear in. At least one of the other three cases. So we're, we're advocating for all four of these cases to be dispensed with simultaneously.
Um. And we already had the public hearing for Z C zero five, correct?
Yeah, we, we, we just continued it.
Okay.
On, uh, twenty Z C zero six, that's a new hearing tonight. The reason for this one is to add certain contractors as a permitted use. In the, uh, light industrial zoning district, and that would be like excavating contractors, landscaped contractors, general contractors. Um, you know, people that have equipment, employees, they need a headquarters to store their equipment. A yard to store their equipment, some of it is outside, place for their employees to park in some general offices. Um, so that, those kinds of businesses can have a legitimate home in the township. Uh, they, they were not actually permitted anywhere prior to this proposed amendment. Case twenty Z C zero eight, um, was created actually to, um. Make it easier for corner lots to have fences in their front yards and, and to more accurately, uh, determine. How high those fences could be and where they needed to be placed. Um, the planning commission recommended doing some things with, uh, definitions. And, and we were going to take one illustration out of the fence section. And, and the planning commission said, why don't you just remove part of the illustration and put it back in? Cause the rest of it will still be very pertinent, uh, to a lot of residents. So that, that's what that case is basically all about. And, um, the last one, twenty Z C zero nine, uh, was proposed with the intention of. Kind of straightening out this question of. Used car sales and, and where in the township, I mean, for a number of years now. A used car dealership has not been permitted anywhere in the township. Um, and, and this amendment proposes to make it a conditional use in the light industrial zoning district. Which will also make it, uh, a permitted or a conditional use in the heavy industrial zoning district. Um, we're, we're changing some of the verbiage in distinguishing between automotive services, which. For instance, could be permitted in the B three zoning district and automobile repairs. Which is a little heavier duty and would be permitted as a conditional use in the B three district. Um, and it's, that's the basic recap and simple summary of all these zoning cases. Uh, have been, uh, seen by the planning commission. Planning commission had recommended certain modifications on all four of these cases. We have responded, maybe not exactly according to the planning commission recommendations, but within that spirit. We, we have made those modifications. Um, that, that's all I have to say pending any questions.
I've got some questions. So, get a chance to really look at these in great detail, but I just opened up zero eight. And, um, on the second or third page, five point eight four, home occupation. They're removing, oh, it says accessory use, okay, so an accessory use of a home, if I understand that correctly. Shouldn't occupy more than twenty-five percent of the floor area of the principal structure, you guys are proposing to remove all that, can I ask why?
Um, yeah, we're, we're putting it into sections fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, and thirty-two.
So it doesn't go?
Based on the recommendation of the planning commission. So they, they wanted us to simplify our, because these are regulations and they're not necessarily definitions. So the planning commission asked us to place them in the sections where home occupations can traditionally be carried on. In order to provide the regulations in those sections and not try to regulate through definitions.
All right, so in the definition for home occupation, that one, is that in front of us in these same hearings then? In a different section?
It's in section five with definitions, yes.
Case zero five.
Um, it would be, where, 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 five point eight four on page five point six.
Okay, so looking at the, and I'm looking in the folder, zoning case is under Rich. And there's four cases that are listed, I see zero six, zero eight, zero nine, and then it looks like zero five? Is that the one, then is zero five?
No, you're on, you, you wanna be in case twenty Z C zero six.
Zero six, okay, now it's where?
It's, it's in section five.
Looks like we start off at section forty-five, what am I missing? Well, here you go, definitions, okay.
Okay, and look on page five point six. Down near the bottom of the page is five point eight four, home occupation.
Looks like it's stricken from there also.
Well, no, not all of it's stricken. All, all that's remaining is the first sentence, an occupation, profession, activity, or use. That is clearly a customary incidental and secondary use to that of a residential dwelling unit. And which does not alter the exterior of the property or affect the residential character of the neighborhood.
All right, but the question that I had.
In that section, or that case, oh, oh, six. If you go, if you scroll to page twenty, that's section fourteen, with, where you'll find the home occupation requirements now. That's the question, right, what you were looking for, the information?
I wanna make sure it wasn't deleted.
Yeah, it's in there under section fourteen, so on that.
Home occupations, I see. Okay, I got it, so it's, it was just moved, okay, all right, thank you.
Any other questions on the zoning cases?
So tonight is just a hearing, correct, on this, this is the, it's the hearings?
We have three hearings, and then we have.
Well, four hearings. I, you, you have to reopen case twenty Z C zero five. And if you're ready to close all four of the hearings, you can close them. And then either tonight or within twenty days, you issue a final decision on each of these cases.
We have to reopen?
Can we just table them?
Well, well, it was tabled, you have to reopen the hearing. Right, Jeremy, Jason, somebody explain.
Okay, all right, I didn't look at it in between, so I'm guilty.
Yeah, you have to reopen the hearing on it, but I think we already did the, the reading of it and the witnesses and everything for that one, right, Rich?
Correct.
Okay, so. You'd reopen, but then you'd open the others, and the others, we'd still have to do everything, have testimony, read the history.
Yeah, wait, the, the first case, the, the hearing has been opened. We heard testimony that was offered when the hearing was first opened. We have continued that and not closed it up to this point in time. The other three cases, we, we have to read officially into the record, the history of the case. Um, accept any testimony, commentary, questions, and then make a decision to either close the case or continue it. And if you close the case, within twenty days of today, you have to make a decision.
Yeah, so oh five, all you have to do is close it, the other three, you have to still do the whole hearing.
But you want them all done together because they tie to each other?
Correct.
So we need to vote on them all at the same time, so if you continue. Or just.
If you can, if you're gonna continue any one of the cases, I, I just recommend that you continue them all.
Well, that one just caught my eye, Gabe, so the concern I have is that, I wanna make sure that, like, the one with the home occupation, I saw that it was deleted. But they moved it somewhere else, and so the question was answered, and my concern is there might be something else that catches my eye. Cause that's important, and so I, I would just like, now they know what I'm looking at, just one more quick glance through it, and I could vote on it next meeting either way.
So if we already opened and closed Z C zero five, are we on the clock for the twenty days on that?
We haven't closed yet, it's still continued.
Okay.
Can we continue it again?
Sure.
Yeah, so, okay, so we can open them, hear it, continue it, and then when we get to the motions. We just skip over that?
You don't have to make any other motion then. If, if you, if you move to continue the case, it's done for tonight, no more discussion tonight.
Yeah, as long as you don't close it tonight, you don't, the clock doesn't start ticking, and you don't have to vote on the motions.
Okay.
Is this time sensitive, Rich, is there something time sensitive here?
Um, no, I think we can live with another couple of weeks.
Okay.
I mean, re- remember, it doesn't, it, none of these becomes effective though, for thirty days after you make your decision.
What about the indoor storage guys, is that gonna bother them?
Yeah, I mean.
Uh, well, they're, 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 they're getting ready, they, they made their purchase of the property, I see, the property did transfer title. We don't have their complete application package yet, but we're close.
It's two weeks gonna mess them up?
Pardon?
Is two weeks gonna mess them up?
It, it. Depends on how fast or slow they're moving, the ball's in their court. I don't know.
The reason why is because there, there are multiple cases that are affecting the same sections. And so as you approve them, the entire sections need to be published and printed out. And then they'll have to be done all over again with the new language from.
Including the car dealership one.
Uh, the car dealership one for permitted uses in the B three. Is there anything else affecting the car dealership or the, the used car sales that?
That one, well, yeah, cause there, that case affects sections twenty-two, twelve, and twenty-five. And, and I think even section five. And all, all of those sections appear in one or more, and most of them, at least two out of the other three, uh, cases, so. Yeah, you know, I, I.
All right, we'll, we'll just go ahead and we'll continue.
All right.
We'll continue all those to the next meeting, Chuck, you better find something good in there you wanna ask a question about, come up with a question at least.
I'll, I'll come up with something, make you feel better.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll say the only one where I think we're creating some leniency is probably, um, the colds or the.
Indoor storage.
Indoor storage by permitting the use, um, permitting the used car dealerships in our industrial and the line of sight safety triangle to permit. Six-foot fences in side yards on corner lots, so.
So, and then really quick, before we get out of this and into the regular meeting, we ran out of time to talk about, um, sixteen fifty minute avenue, so we'll talk about that next meeting. I did just wanna mention that in that application packet they gave us, um, for some reason, they gave us the listing of property taxes and when they were paid, I think to show that they were current. But it also shows they didn't make any tax payments in twenty nineteen, and they had a big payment due in twenty twenty. Um, I don't know what the purpose of including that in the packet was, just wanted to draw your attention to that.
Transparency.
Sure, um, under business activities in the petition, um, the, the attorney states that, uh. The property's been in use for this, as a used car dealership, um, continuously, since the variance was first approved. Or conditional use was first approved. I think with the timeline we have, it clearly states it sat vacant for over a year, so that statement that they had in the petition was incorrect. Um, and then, as I think Rich pointed out, some of the photos in there also, they were in violation of the conditions placed upon them about cars parking. So even when they did operate, maybe they weren't following all the rules they were supposed to. Just wanted to throw that out there as we all dig into it more over the next couple of weeks.
And they weren't they really technically operating under clerical error in the first place?
It was an error made.
Procedural error?
Yes.
So, yeah, a lot of things to consider over the next two weeks. All right, with that, we'll close this work session, do you wanna end the stream, come right back, and we'll get started.
Okay.